I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 16th regular meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education. Let us begin this evening with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have the quiet, please? And we'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with roll call.
Emily Ebel.
Here.
Sandra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Ryan Miller.
Ryan, just for a point about he's on vacation this month, he's unable to be here.
Glenn Newcomb.
I am here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our regular agenda, the first thing on the agenda is the approval and signing of the October regular meetings as well as the November special meeting that we had. Upon review of board members', are there any additions or corrections to the minutes that have been submitted? If not, may I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
By Tom, is there a second?
Second.
I heard Sandra first.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sandra. Rob, please call the roll.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the item on our agenda is public participation. As I reviewed last month, you know, in order to speak in public, the public participation segment of this, board president or the superintendent has to be contacted prior to the meeting. For this meeting, we have two people in the public that came forward that would like to address the board, and at this time, we are going to allow for that. First, I'm going to call forward or ask for Kim Snaveley, and then we will have Tim Conover. So, at this time, I'm going to allow you. State your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Kim Snaveley. My address is 425 West South Street, Bryan, Ohio, and I am here on behalf of my daughter, Senator Snaveley, and her friend, Maddie Stockman, on the incident that occurred May 12th, 2012. I guess, thank you for allowing us to express again, in this open forum, our feelings on the situation. We met with you two other times, and in September, we met in closed session, where from three years ago in that event, that was the very first time that our daughters were actually interviewed and asked what occurred on that evening of May 12th. They've never been asked that before. They openly and open-heartedly shared the whole event, never once asked before. And also, within that, Hooli Stockman came forth with the bylaws and the code of conduct of the actions of Stephanie Grub and how she should have handled that situation.
And I will remind you to not use specific names.
They are public knowledge, so.
Rules of public participation.
Okay. And also, that the administrator also was given all those details by my husband, Larry Snaveley, and Hooli, who they went forth the following business day, and in detail told her every single event that had occurred. Within that, she told us that, and she obviously had heard about that, that her lawyer told her because it did not occur on school grounds, that there was nothing they could do about it. So, from that point on, she told my husband to his face that, and Hooli Stockman had yet apologized to Hooli for the event, and she was very sorry that it happened. Seven days later, Mrs. Grub was giving a letter of reprimand, and she basically was told, you know, because of her behavior, whatever, and because she's a good citizen, that, you know, she hoped that this would not occur again. So, in closed session, we went through detail of all the law. Then, in October, we met in open session, because we had not heard anything from the board about the situation. I came forth and expressed, you know, what are you going to do about this? Because in the details of the paper was because you had received all of the detail and information that had occurred, because Steve Towns had opened up this box of work, this event. So, all of these details were being enlightened to you. And within that, and all those details, there was never given any type of resolution or any type of, well, we're going to do a really thorough investigation. You were given all of those facts within that, and there was facts that you didn't even know about, that the administrator did not share three years ago to the social service or to the authorities for mandated reporting. And from what I can see, mandated reporting has been in effect since 2007, and was revised in 2008. So, I guess our biggest issue was, we have not heard anything from you. We haven't had a letter, we didn't get a phone call, we had heard nothing, until I heard outside of the door that we got a letter in the mail that I have not received at this point. I think Mike Stockman said he did receive that. But according to the code of conduct and the bylaws, the board and the administrator are obligated to do a thorough investigation. Now, I don't know what those details entail, but I also know that once reprimand has been sent forth to a teacher, she is protected by the school, by the teachers' union. I can't imagine that the union has received this explicit detail of this event. Now, according to facts, if my kids just came across these items in her home, yeah, granted, shame on them, I would have never done anything. But the point of no return was when she took the man and turned around and coerced them back to her house to look at this sexual item. That was the point of no return, which was a fourth, fifth degree felony.
No, it was not. Attorney General.
According to the Attorney General, it was not because the two years of statute of limitations have ran out.
A felony, there's no six or seven years statute of limitations.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with that. So, we won't argue about that, that's fine.
Everything you've shared with us, you shared with us last month, is there anything new that you want to share with us?
I guess, to me, it's responsibility and accountability. I think that as a board, you have been elected by the community to act on your responsibility as our school board, to oversee our school matters, to oversee our administration, and to see the lack thereof of what is not getting done. And through our eyes and the community's eyes, there really hasn't been anything done.
We'll address that shortly. Your time is up, I'm going to allow Tim to speak now.
Okay.
And we will address that very shortly. Tim?
My name's Tim Conover, I live at 601 Circle Drive here in Bryan. I'm here on behalf of, really on behalf of myself, I guess I would say, and out of concern for the two girls who I feel were victimized, in my opinion. You know, really, I think it's important in all this to understand, I have a freshman in the high school. Many of you know him, his name's Luke, and throughout the years in the school system, he's been here his entire career, I could not tell you how wonderful an experience he's had. The teachers, the administrators, the support staff have all been wonderful. And I thank Diana for it, and I thank the board for allowing, you know, that type of atmosphere to thrive. And I see that in other kids as well. You know, it's been my observation that momentum has been building in Bryan, you know, as we transfer to the new facilities. The community involvement with the teaching community and layout of the building, and the cooperation to help look at different methods to educate our children between the teaching community and the public is, to the best of my knowledge, unprecedented in this area, if not elsewhere in the state that I'm aware of. These and other recent events, I really feel have turned the tide towards a new level of trust between the community and our school system. Something that at times, over the years, has been tested. I think, you know, anybody that's been around here a while knows that, and I think that's unfortunate. I really feel that we've really turned the corner, hopefully, and we're moving in the proper direction. I think people are getting motivated to get involved. Unique in our opportunity, in our community, is that we are able to look each other in the eye, discuss matters of importance, sometimes agreeing with each other and sometimes not. Diana's always been available to me, and we've not always agreed on things, but we've certainly had productive conversations that, you know, have not turned into arguments. And I think that's the way it should be. I mentioned, you know, Glenn called today, and, you know, with my request to speak tonight, which was rather short-term, I called this morning, and I knew it was on short-term, and, you know, I said to him, I kind of mentioned this, I said, you know, we live in a community where I could knock on Glenn's door probably, or Tom's, and we can have a discussion, or I could pull Tom over on the side of the road and have a discussion. You don't get that a lot of places. But the well-being and safety of our children, I think we can all agree, is a matter of importance above all else. It cannot be overstated. The report that came out, that is public knowledge now, that the not-so-recent events involving a teacher that's still educating our children, the art teacher involved, the intentional act of introducing two 13- and 14-year-olds to a dildo is beyond troubling. I just have to reflect on that in my own situation with my own children, my own child. Also troubling is something that can be seen as grooming, was met with a letter of reprimand. For those of you that don't know what grooming is, and the context of child abuse, I'll ask you to look that up when you come. It's a very serious first step, or one of the first steps in a process that is atrocious. The administration's desire to protect the identity of the children involved was proper and just. I give you credit for that. That's done every day with cases involving victims such as these, and in cases involving personal contact, both adults and children. It does not, however, justify the lack of action by our administration, despite the opinion from Job and Family Services. JFS is not elected to run our schools. They are not the first line of defense in protecting our children. Plain and simple, our administration should have been just and decisive by conveying that we, and you are we, find this to be as close to the worst violation of our children to the worst violation of our children as can be. Quite frankly, I think it was probably a step or two away, and not subject to one more child, and not subject one more child to this person in the classroom. I think that is very important. I'm not here for a pound of flesh. The current discussion of the offense is not the fault of the local paper, the sheriff, a bathroom door, a position on a softball team, any prior friendship or opinion from JFS, to name a few that are brought up, not only in public, but by the administration There is no excuse for it not to been handled immediately, in my opinion. The offense was intentional and calculated. The offender should have never seen the inside of our school buildings again. The girls and the family should have been provided whatever assistance and counseling is afforded to those who face child abuse. If needed, excuse me, if needed, and still should be, to make, to be made clear, that the child is never at fault in cases of abuse. Somewhere along the line, we've heard things of someone shouldn't be going through a drawer, and I know some of this comes from social media, but it's a world we live in. I think a lot of this has been confused in the community, and unfortunately, as in many cases of child abuse, the abused ends up getting some sort of the blame. And at very least, they feel like they are to blame. We as a community and Bryan City Schools will never, ever tolerate any threat to the well-being of our children. That has, there's just, I think we make that assumption, but that needs to be a passion, and it needs to be stated going forward. There's cases that we don't know about in this system, and I don't mean to insinuate by anybody involved or under the employ of the system. It's horrible, it happens every day. And to have something this close happen to one of our students by one of ours, our teachers that is employed by us and trusted by us, is egregious at best. And in closing, I will ask the administration to do what they could have done three years Make sure that all parties are involved, that all parties involved are properly taken care of, and I'm talking to families and the children. If needed, even though one is of majority age now, I think that, you know, if there is some care that needs to be taken care, that needs to be provided, I think we should provide that to her. The community deserves to know what the administration should have done differently. The measures being implemented to avoid this from happening in the future, that this in no way should ever reflect the quality of the teaching staff in Bryan. My fear is, the entire teaching staff is taking a hit over this. And quite frankly, some that I've talked to are very upset by that possibility, and they should be. And again, in closing, you know, I think we need to get on about building the trust again in this community. We've got a wonderful community, we've got a wonderful opportunity going forward. We need to see ourselves, I would like to see us take the lead in protecting our children again, and not abdicate that responsibility to other state agencies, outside investigators, and whatever else we have. We have the responsibility, we have elected officials, to protect our children. And for some reason, that did not happen this time. It's hard to prevent, but it should have been acted on decisively. I thank you for your time. On short notice, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Well, for both of you, I'd like to begin by saying that those are very powerful words, heartfelt words, and as parents, as board members here, we are all parents, we all have daughters. Let me assure you that the safety of our children is of the utmost importance, and that we absolutely want to maintain the trust of our community. The situation that happened 42 months ago, three and a half years ago, it's been sitting out there way too long, in your opinion, that something should have been done sooner. I agree. When it comes to situations like this, there's a lot of finger-pointing of who should have done what and who's responsible. I've been inundated with a lot of people that say that it was the parent's responsibility to go directly to the police and not go to the employer or the place where that person works. Many people have jobs where things happen, and it's perplexing to some people that you would say you're going to the employer and not to the police. That's one argument.
Employer, no, man.
You can't talk in public, it's my turn. This is done. Don't break my thought. There is a lot of discussion of who and what should have happened, and we hear it from all sides, and we're put in a very difficult position as the board. And for the last six months, we have been working on this diligently, and I want to assure you that I have been dealing with this as board president, as a board member, as a community member, as a father, and as a person, and a person of faith as well, of what to do with this matter. But we live in a country that people have rights, and we have to abide by laws. When it comes to moral and what's right and wrong, I think we all have a very strong compass, and we know what's right. No one's going to change my mind on that, but we did get a response to you. The board worked on a formal response that the consensus of the board could agree to. We sent it out Friday. I sent it out late Friday afternoon. The Stockmans received their letter, they went to their mailbox. I apologize that you did not. But with your permission, I would like to read that letter and that response. And this was the response from the entire board, to Mr. and Mrs. Snaveley and Mr. and Mrs. Stockman. At the board meeting October 19th, 2015, Mrs. Snaveley indicated your disappointment that the Board of Education had not provided you with a response to your initial complaint made at the September board meeting. Please accept this letter as that requested response. The board thinks it is important for everyone involved to understand the limitations the board has regards to Mrs. Grub. Those limitations are many. First, the conduct occurred off-campus with little or no nexus or connection to her employment, and that was three years ago. She is a teacher with a continuing contract with multiple protections under the laws of the state of Ohio. There have been no further incidents of misconduct. Second, Children's Services was called, and they declined to investigate. You praise Dr. Eckhart for making that call. Mrs. Snaveley admitted that they did not screen the matter, and she believed that that was a mistake. If it had been done so, we may be in a different set of circumstances today. Whether it was or was not a mistake, it does not change the fact that they chose not to investigate the matter, as they did not believe the facts necessitated an investigation. There has been no official indication from them that this position has changed. Third, the Defiance County Sheriff investigated fully and determined that the conduct did not rise to the level of criminal conduct. You have noted several times that a felony has occurred, and it is only because of the statute of limitations has passed, that this matter has not been pursued criminally. Both of those statements are not supported by the facts. We urge you to reread the report and the case analysis presented by Special Prosecutor David Grain. It is attached to Detective Van De Mark's report, and if it has failed to give, and if they have failed to give you a copy of that document, we would be happy to provide it. He indicated quite clearly that none of the pertinent criminal statutes were violated, and that conduct did not constitute criminal conduct. Additionally, if it were truly a felony, as you allege, as noted in Special Prosecutor Grain's report, a felony has a six-year statute of limitations. We are clearly within that timeframe, and no charges have been filed, assumingly because the conduct did not arise to the criminal conduct pursuant to the analysis of Special Prosecutor Grain. Further, the Attorney General just issued its report from a request made to them by Sheriff Towns. The Attorney General also found that the conduct did not rise to a felony level. And aside, Mrs. Snaveley indicated that she was called in May about the investigation of this incident. I would note to you that Sheriff Towns has admitted that he has known of this matter for some time. That admission is clearly noted in Detective Van De Mark's report and the report of the special prosecutor. Lastly, the Ohio Department of Education has determined that the conduct was unrelated to Mrs. Grub's licensure, license, sure, and thus, her employment. They are not going to investigate this matter. The Board of Education is not part of the justice system. That is the responsibility of government legislation, public law enforcement, and judicial systems. Those entities have already weighed in on this, and this issue, in on this issue, as noted in this letter. The board is bound by the laws of the state of Ohio, and in large degree, what it can do is driven by the findings of those entities. While the Board of Education certainly places a heavy emphasis on the health and safety of its students, in this instance, based on the totality of the circumstances, we believe everybody is better suited moving forward. And I know that sounds cold, and I know that's not the answer that you want to hear, but this is where we stand as a board. If anything else arises, situations could change. But as it stands right now, what are we to do? It's very difficult, and this is something that is torn at us. I've lost hundreds of hours of sleep over this situation, and I apologize if it's not what you want to hear. But at this time, this is the response from the board. This concludes our public participation segment of the meeting. I'd like a five-minute recess before we continue. Meeting will come back to order. May we note that we're back in order at 7:33. Moving on with the regular agenda, we have communications under Ford County. Sandra?
Hi. Ford County, yeah, everything's going wonderful there. I want to point out a few things going on in the respective community. Ford County is always looking for successful alumni to offer their wisdom and talents. The alumni can volunteer their time, in part, in a mentoring program, business advisory, or special events. So, those viewers that are listening, and our alumni of Ford County Career Center, we encourage you to get ahold of the school and pass on your talents that you have to the current students. I also want to mention that the cosmetology salon is now open and specializes in a range of services, including hairstyling, coloring, perms, facials, manicures, pedicures, and their regular hours are Thursday and Friday, that you can go out and actually have these services performed by students. And the Four Star Cafe is open, and you can go out there on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from 11:00 to 1:00, and enjoy delicious culinary concoctions, their word, that the trained chefs are doing, and enjoy items that are crafted by their students, and a relaxing atmosphere, and enjoy a delectable meal. There you go, some fun things going on at Ford County when it comes to the cosmetology salon and the cafe.
Okay.
See what our kids are doing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thanks.
Moving right along, we're going to the Treasurers' Report. Rob?
Thank you. We'll start with the financial reports for the month ended October 31st, 2015. Our cash reconciliation report, our balance at Farmers Emergence Bank was $13,755,563. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $43,706. Investments at Star Ohio, $3,233,138. At Morgan Stanley, investments of $34,709,280. And at State Bank, $4,7,699.81. Petty cash funds and change funds total, $7,750. Total funds on hand at the end of October, $55,669,726. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $12,691,125. Our bond retirement fund, $1,252,599. Our permanent improvement fund, $2,338,876. Our LFI Building Fund, $3,202,623. Our local share of the construction project fund, $30,151,469. And the state share of the project fund, $5,178,920. Another fund I'd like to point out is our O-34 Fund, our project maintenance fund, where the OFSC asks us to set aside one-half mil of our income from property tax, and that has a balance of $267,547, and that money will... And that money, as soon as our facilities are completed, can be used on maintenance of our facility. Once again, total balance is $55,669,726. Our SN2 report for the month, year-to-date, our revenues are $129,923. Ahead of budget and our expenses are $113,550. Under budget, our total positive variance is $243,473. Any questions on those reports? If not, we'll move on to amended appropriations. Our total appropriations at this point in time total $25,424,341. Changes during the month included an additional $100,000 for the general fund, grants, some additions there totaling $20,935. Our athletic department have increased of $3,205. Our building project fund for locally funded initiatives, an increase of $61,631. Our local and state share project fund, a decrease of $263,417 due to some change orders that came back in our favor. The OHSAA tournament fund, $415, and student activity funds, an increase of $12,200. Our net change for the month was a decrease of $65,030. Any questions on amended appropriations? If not, next we'll talk about some donations the district received. From the Academic Booster Club to the Bryan Middle School, a donation of $1,000. From the Athletic Boosters to the athletic program for baseball uniforms and equipment, a donation of $5,220. The Civic League donated $500 to our one-on-one laptop program. And the George Azar and Mary Aide Isaac Memorial Fund through the Bryan Area Foundation donated a sum of $3,411.50 to the district. And also, Jack and Vivian Taylor donated books in the value of $150 to Washington Elementary Library. Next on the agenda, requesting authorization to transfer the sum of $13,595.49 from the IDEAB grant from fiscal year 15 to the fiscal year 16 grant. Those funds left over in that grant at the end of last fiscal year, and the Ohio Department of Education has asked us to transfer those over and use them in fiscal year 16, so we're glad to do that. Next, we ask for approval of the resolution accepting the amounts and tax rates as determined by the Budget Commission. That document is, is enclosed. Our permanent improvement fund levy is at 4.4 mils, which is inside millage. Our bond retirement fund is at 7.45 mils, and our general fund levies total 49.4 mils. That's made up of ongoing levies of 27 mils of current expense levies, and then our emergency levy is at 6.5 mils. That's down three-tenths of a mil from last year. So in total, our millage is at 61.25 mils, voted mils, as compared to 61.55 mils last year. Any questions regarding those items?
Okay, thank you, Rob. Are there any other questions? If not, may I have a motion supporting the Treasurers' Report recommendations along with the resolution? It's moved by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Emily. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, there's some construction items here for the Board's approval. First is a change order number 12 for the construction project. That is through Rudolph Libby. That's an increase of $50,907.50. That's for unsuitable soils, foundation undercuts, the materials needed to strengthen the foundation due to poor soil qualities that they found as they were digging. So additional work had to be taken on there in order to make our foundations suitable. Is that correct explanation of that, Tom?
Yeah, it just, he had some poor bearing soils and he just had to take the foundations deeper.
And our next change order number 13 is also with Rudolph Libby. This is made up of two items. First, this is terrazzo flooring that we're putting in the 6th to 12th building. We had included this as an LFI in our original bond levy. This came in at $132,882.85 above the other flooring. Our original estimate was $250,000, so this came in well under what our original estimates were. And also, this is made up of a switch in equipment for our HVAC units. We're going to train chiller and CalMac ice storage units in lieu of equipment that was previously specified by the contractor in bid. Reviewing what was provided to us in the bid, we were not happy with the quality of that equipment. And Mr. Ruffer, he is, like I alluded to last year, he has, last month, he has done extensive research on this, and we did not feel comfortable that we were putting quality equipment in our new building, therefore, we, we asked for this change, and that's the reason for this additional amount. So that change order totals $195,034 of those two items. Any questions on those two items? Finally, we have a contingency LFI MOU. This is a document, this is requested by the Ohio School Facility Commission. Now, up to this point, we have been pretty much on budget with our construction budget, and after bids were received for GMP2, Rudolph Libby presented the district with a list of alternates totaling nearly $1.3 million. And the school district was asked to accept, reject, or place these alternates in a pending status. After looking at these alternates and making these decisions, we are still under budget in our GMP2 by nearly $109,000. Some of these items are adding up to like $304,000, and they're made up of the brick and mortar selections we made, the HVAC equipment changes we just talked about, putting in the gym partition, putting in an extra-sized diesel generator that will do a better job of powering our, our plant out here in case of catastrophic problems with electricity or so forth, so that we can possibly use our facilities as a shelter for the school, for the community, and still have electricity and power to run our, our units, our HVAC units, our kitchen equipment and so forth, without having to endure large losses of, of equipment or products. So within the budget for the pre-K to 5 building, there exists a swing space allowance of about That's shared 65% by the school district and 35% by the state. That money is not going to be used. We're not going to need to use that. So when we get that money back from the state, that's going to amount to about $372,000. We will make an amendment to our project agreement with the OFCC in the spring after we bid the pre-K to 5 project. They don't want to amend that until we get that bid to see where those numbers come in. But that number's going, that amount of money's coming back into the project to us. So there's a, there's a piece of this that will help offset what we're seeing here. Right now, what they're asking us to do is guarantee the pricing on this $304,000 in, in items that we've chosen to take on by using our permanent improvement funds of the district, which we, we have 2-point-some million dollars in our PI fund. Then, when this other money comes back, we will just bring that money into the PI fund to make up for what we have spent out. So it's a short-term, I guess, patch you could call it maybe, to just satisfy the OFCC that the items that we are asking for, we have money to fund. So that's the purpose of that document, and we, we're pretty happy with where we stand today with some of the choices we've made in moving forward, so.
Okay, very good. So may I have a motion to accept the recommended change order, two change orders, as well as the construction contingency locally funded initiative memorandum of understanding? It's a mouthful, isn't it?
Emily said.
Moved by Emily. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Cindera. Please call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business that we need to discuss?
I don't think so.
Nothing is under new business, therefore, we will move into the superintendent recommendations for the month.
So before you, you have an overnight trip request for the high school swim team. They're going to be attending a swimming invitational that will require an overnight stay this winter. That's just a one-night stay. Once we get closer to tournaments, we'll take a look at those approvals as we get closer to the end of the season. We also have in front of you paperwork for approval of an overnight trip for our high school band. This is not until the school year 2016-17, but our band will be traveling to Orlando to participate in one of the football bowl games. And we're very excited to have received that invitation and are working with the company to finalize the dates, but it'll be during that time between Christmas and New Year's, so kids will not miss any school. And then finally, before you, you have approval of a parent spectator code of conduct. This is something that we've had in use for a few years. Just a few updates, and those updates are highlighted for you. Are there any questions regarding either of the trips or the parent code of conduct?
Okay, thank you. If not, may I have a motion supporting the administrative recommendations for the month?
I'll move.
Moved by Cindera?
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business that we need to discuss?
I don't think so.
Nothing is under new business, therefore, we will move into the superintendent recommendations for the month.
So before you, you have an overnight trip request for the high school swim team. They're going to be attending a swimming invitational that will require an overnight stay this winter. That's just a one-night stay. Once we get closer to tournaments, we'll take a look at those approvals as we get closer to the end of the season. We also have in front of you paperwork for approval of an overnight trip for our high school band. This is not until the school year 2016-17, but our band will be traveling to Orlando to participate in one of the football bowl games. And we're very excited to have received that invitation and are working with the company to finalize the dates, but it'll be during that time between Christmas and New Year's, so kids will not miss any school. And then finally, before you, you have approval of a parent spectator code of conduct. This is something that we've had in use for a few years. Just a few updates, and those updates are highlighted for you. Are there any questions regarding either of the trips or the parent code of conduct?
Okay, thank you. If not, may I have a motion supporting the administrative recommendations for the month?
I'll move.
Moved by Cindera?
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Under commendations, we are already at the end of the first quarter, so we have our listings of our All-A Honor Roll for the high school. We have our Student Actions of October, we have our 2015-16 National Honor Society inductees, as well as our Black Swamp Honors Choir. We'd like to recognize Claire Hurt for her participation in the All-State Choir. Our Ford County Career Center Student of the Month, Acacia Hunt. Our Kiwanis Students of the Month, Michael Sheridan was a regional qualifier for the boys' cross-country team. We also have end-of-year awards for our fall sports. So you see listed the NWAL awards for cross-country, for football, for golf, for soccer. We have our district qualifier and district honorable mention for boys' golf in Jarrett Miller. We have our academic all Ohio recognition for golf for Jarrett Miller and Tyler Rouget. We have our district awards for both boys' and girls' soccer, and then our district and league awards for volleyball listed. At our middle school, we honor our All-A Honor Roll students in grades 7 and 8. Our character trait of the month was self-control. We recognize our students of action in our ICS top dogs in grades 4 and 5. The 5th and 6th Quiz Bowl team finished 3rd in the Williams County Tournament, so we congratulate Jay Fortner, Michael Ledger, Katie Seaman, Drew Dauber, Aiden Pals, Kaitlyn Ridgway, and Coach Jamie Morris. We had two participants in the Bowling Green State University Junior High Honors Band, and then we'd like to recognize our junior high boys' and girls' cross-country teams who finished 2nd in our league, and also our 8th grade football team for a 7-1 season. As mentioned earlier, our character trait of self-control for Lincoln students and Washington students, as well as our PE Gold Slip winners, our sportsmanship contest classrooms, and our character bear contest classrooms for both Washington and Lincoln. There is a tremendous amount of student achievement that happened this month, and we congratulate all of our hard-working students.
Thank you very much. It's your motion to approve the accommodations for the month.
I'll move.
Moved by Cindera?
I'll second.
Second by Emily. Please call the roll.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business that we need to discuss?
I don't think so.
Nothing is under new business, therefore, we will move into the superintendent recommendations for the month.
So before you, you have an overnight trip request for the high school swim team. They're going to be attending a swimming invitational that will require an overnight stay this winter. That's just a one-night stay. Once we get closer to tournaments, we'll take a look at those approvals as we get closer to the end of the season. We also have in front of you paperwork for approval of an overnight trip for our high school band. This is not until the school year 2016-17, but our band will be traveling to Orlando to participate in one of the football bowl games. And we're very excited to have received that invitation and are working with the company to finalize the dates, but it'll be during that time between Christmas and New Year's, so kids will not miss any school. And then finally, before you, you have approval of a parent spectator code of conduct. This is something that we've had in use for a few years. Just a few updates, and those updates are highlighted for you. Are there any questions regarding either of the trips or the parent code of conduct?
Okay, thank you. If not, may I have a motion supporting the administrative recommendations for the month?
I'll move.
Moved by Cindera?
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business that we need to discuss?
I don't think so.
Nothing is under new business, therefore, we will move into the superintendent recommendations for the month.
So before you, you have an overnight trip request for the high school swim team. They're going to be attending a swimming invitational that will require an overnight stay this winter. That's just a one-night stay. Once we get closer to tournaments, we'll take a look at those approvals as we get closer to the end of the season. We also have in front of you paperwork for approval of an overnight trip for our high school band. This is not until the school year 2016-17, but our band will be traveling to Orlando to participate in one of the football bowl games. And we're very excited to have received that invitation and are working with the company to finalize the dates, but it'll be during that time between Christmas and New Year's, so kids will not miss any school. And then finally, before you, you have approval of a parent spectator code of conduct. This is something that we've had in use for a few years. Just a few updates, and those updates are highlighted for you. Are there any questions regarding either of the trips or the parent code of conduct?
Okay, thank you. If not, may I have a motion supporting the administrative recommendations for the month?
I'll move.
Moved by Cindera?
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cindera?
Yes.
Tom?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Part of that is the student learning objectives that we've been working with teachers on of how they're going to show growth in their students this year. So that's been an interesting process of working with kindergarten teachers all the way up, preschool, all the way up through the 12th grade, of how we're going to show progress in our students this year.
Thank you. Mr. Hoard is here to represent our elementary.
Good evening. Just a few things. Veterans Day was supposed to be last Wednesday, and we had our Fall Day, so we had our program on Friday. Had a great turnout. We had almost 100 veterans show up. Great community support. All of our grade levels, pre-K to 5, had a part in the program, so went really, really well. Michael Strile was one of our guest speakers. Did a phenomenal job. But just a great, great thing for our community and for our school district, recognizing our veterans on what they do for us. Also, we started testing. Fourth grade started their gifted testing this week. They test for three days. Our third grade, we do in their air assessment when we come back from Thanksgiving break on December 2nd and 3rd. And then also, we're getting geared up for Christmas for Kids, which will be November 30th through December 4th. Again, we have lots of special days planned in pre-K to 4, as in regards to dress-up days and the collection event. And lastly, we continue to do our teacher planning days. We're looking at a month-by-month basis with our sub-coverage. Our teachers continue to collaborate and plan together. We're trying to streamline things, whether it's common assessments at the grade level, a variety of different areas that we're looking at, but our teachers are really working hard to, again, do what's best for our children in the classroom each day, so thank you.
Mr. Ari.
Good evening. It's the month of giving in preparation for the holidays lately at the six-to-12 level. If you had a chance to get out and get some soup at the Super Bowl this past Friday for the fall play, they were able to collect $3,100 in donations. So all that money will go into the local homeless shelters, so that's very rewarding. Very proud of them for gathering that money. A recent blood drive, if you were there, on the 30th of October, they gathered 43 units. I don't know exactly what a unit comprises of, but they were able to gather 43 units to give back there as well. As Mr. Hoover noted, our Christmas for Kids is underway, is currently underway at the high school this week. Students are asked to bring a $3 donation or a toy, and the reward is for donating is they get an assembly at the end of the week. At the middle school, we started November 30th, and it goes through the 4th, and they're asked, they're going to have dress-up days for those who donate, and some competitions between the buildings for how much money we can raise for the Christmas for Kids cause. We also had a Veterans Day assembly at the middle school level, grade six to eight. Our guest speakers, Mr. John Ely and Mr. Rich Deverney, did a fantastic job in engaging the students, talked about honor, courage, commitment, and patriotism, and it really hit home with the students. It was a very rewarding experience for them, and we all spent the opportunity to honor veterans as well, and we thank them for not only all they do, but for being in attendance with us. Our fall play was this past weekend, the Diviners, just a graduation to the cast and crew for their success during the fall play, as it was outstanding. And Talking Holidays, the Christmas concert is coming up, December 13th, it's Sunday at 2:00, at the Arts and Ed Building. And just one update on, from our perspective with the new building, we are putting together the new six-to-12 schedule. So our teachers, our guidance department, administrators have been working collaboratively together to develop the schedule and all the components of how we're going to mesh grades six to eight with grades nine to 12, and we're starting to get to that point where it's coming together, and we're going to keep those discussions ongoing with our staff, and it's going to be a busy month, or end of the month here in November, and busy December in preparing all those for support approval for some course offerings, and some different course offerings, and some different avenues of education. So we're excited, and we're looking forward to it. Keep plugging away. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was interesting to hear the great reports of all the great things happening in our school district. At this time, we do have a need to go into executive session under item A, employment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, motion, compensation of employees. So is there a motion to go into executive session for the stated reason?
So moved.
Moved by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Emily. Please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Cassandra?
Yes.
Under personnel, we're going to go back and forth between the regular agenda and the addendum. First of all, we have approval of FMLA leave for some of our employees. I'm recommending the hiring of classified personnel. Carrie Daggers is middle school one-on-one aide, zero years experience, at 6.25 hours per day, effective October 26th.